is called to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Bomke.
Here.
Mr. Cavalier.
Here.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Dudenheffer.
Yes.
Mrs. Mauer.
Here.
Ms. Shelton.
Here.
Mr. Snellings.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. And good afternoon. My name is Meg Bomke. I represent the Falmouth District and I'm the Chairman of the Board of Supervisors. I would like to recognize that this is National Police Week and today is Peace Officers Memorial Day, which is why the flags are at half-staff. In 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation which designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which that date falls as Police Week. Currently, tens of thousands of law enforcement officers from around the world converge on Washington, DC to participate in a number of planned events which honor those that have paid the ultimate sacrifice. The memorial service began in 1982 as a gathering in Senate Park of approximately 120 survivors and supporters of law enforcement. Decades later, the event, more commonly known as National Police Week, has grown to a series of events which attracts thousands of survivors and law enforcement officers to our nation's capital each year. Last week, we were honored to have Law Enforcement United and hundreds of cyclists who stopped in Stafford at the Public Safety Building on their way to Washington, DC to the Law Enforcement Officers Memorial. Law enforcement officers' mission is to honor the service and sacrifice of all law enforcement officers that have died in the line of duty and remember the survivors left behind. The Stafford County Sheriff's Office is participating. It's referred to as LEU, Law Enforcement United Ride, and there are other activities planned to honor Stafford's finest. I would like to invite the public to our observance of Memorial Day on Friday, May 25th at 9:00 AM at our beautiful Armed Services Memorial here on the grounds of our Government and Center campus. We will gather to remember those who made the ultimate sacrifice in service to our country. As well, if you have purchased bricks for your loved ones since last Veterans Day, the new bricks have been installed. And with that, are there any additions or deletions to the regular agenda?
Madam Chair, you do have the addition 25?
Right. We have item number 25, which is an addition to the consent agenda. It's a resolution expressing Stafford County's position in support of Congressman Rob Whitman's request for a detailed analysis of the potential move of the Chemical Biological Radiological Defense Division from Dahlgren to Indian Head. It's proposed resolution R-18-138. Okay? So with that addition, does anyone have anything else? Do I have a motion?
Some moves.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any conversation?
Yes, Madam Chair. On the agenda today, and I'm not exactly sure where I asked these questions on the agenda, but on the closed session agenda, there is item number three. And the one that is being provided for the public talks about consultation with legal counsel and briefings. While the consultation with legal counsel is appropriate to be done in a closed session, I feel for the sake of transparency that the topic, which is the Cardinal Meadows rezoning, should be provided to the public. There was a request by the developer on the Cardinal Meadows. I will ask for that legal advice in closed session, but what I do want to do is I want to enter a couple of items for the record on this topic. Would you prefer, Madam Chair, if I entered those items for the record now during this discussion item or when we go to move into closed session?
Ms. McLendon, what would be most appropriate for the board?
Madam Chairman, I believe it's at your discretion. We don't have protocol for this.
Okay. I would say that those comments can be received now.
All righty. So the request that we received by Mr. Payne, who is the representative for Cardinal Meadows, was a request, it was an email that was provided to Mike Zarath on Saturday, May 5th, and he is asking for a six-month extension on the rezoning request. This six-month extension, we have one year to provide, and so this six-month extension is outside the norm, hence the need for legal advice. But where I take exception on this email is that he provides the first reason is an inability to directly communicate with the district supervisor regarding the proposal, even though several attempts have been made to undertake this reasonable process. While Mr. Payne has made these requests, as have his clients made the requests, I would like to also enter into the record a voicemail that I received from Mr. Payne because it illustrates the reason why I will not entertain these meetings or even a phone call with Mr. Payne. Because what he is asking me to do in this voicemail message is he's asking me to provide him an up or down vote on this project. And where I find this to be inappropriate, this up or down vote on this project, is that the project has considerably changed. It has not been sent before the public, and so I will not provide that up or down vote. I believe that the public needs to have an opportunity to weigh in, and I would like to have this voicemail transcribed for the record and entered into the record, ma'am. In addition to that, I would like to publicly state that I will not entertain any meetings with developers who are asking me for an up or down vote before the project in its entirety is presented by the public and vetted by staff. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. And thank you, Mrs. McLendon. We can then, the clerk of the board can add that in at a later date. We don't have to do that at this point in time. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. With that, could everyone cast their vote for the regular agenda in adding item number 25 to the consent? Tally the votes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next week is Emergency Service Providers Week. I am proud to recognize Stafford County's hard work and dedicated EMTs. May I please have Sheriff Cardello? I mean Chief Cardello. What did I call him? Sheriff? Oh. Chief Cardello, Deputy Chief Knowles.
Chief Knowles?
Yeah. I don't know.
Chief Knowles?
And Assistant Chief Granger, Captain Mitchell, and Mrs. Martha Newton, President of Rescue Seven in White Oak, to please join me at the dais. Thank you. And please forgive me for that. And I was wondering if you'd also like to invite, I believe we have some students from Colonial Forge here, is that correct? And all of you in the back, if you would please join us up here, I would really appreciate Want to just slide down? Thank you so much for coming up. A proclamation recognizing May 20th through 26th, 2018, as Emergency Medical Services Week in Stafford County. Whereas, emergency medical services provide a vital public need. And whereas, members of Stafford County's Fire and Rescue Emergency Medical Services Team, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden injury or illness. And whereas, the emergency medical services system consists of emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, emergency room physicians, and nurses, educators, administrators, and others. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of Stafford County's emergency medical services provides by designating the week in their honor. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors on this, the 15th day of May, 2018, that it be, and hereby does, recognize May 20th through 26th, 2018, as Emergency Medical Services Week in Stafford County. So, thank you. I'll give this to you. So I want to welcome Chief Cardello. I mean, this is your first proclamation, right? Yep. So, welcome. And I'm sure you'd like to say a few words. I have to tell you, it seems like down in the southern part of the county, I hear those sirens all the time. And I think of you every time going, they're going to save a life. And I have to tell you, when I used to be on the school board, I always recognized the school buses. And I still recognize those, but all I know is you all work really, really hard. And I thank you, and I know the entire board and the community thanks you for all of your efforts all the time. So, thank you very much.
Good afternoon. Quickly, we have our, some of our career staff from Station Two. We have the EMT class represented from Colonial Forge High School. Martha.
President.
President. Okay. White Oak. I'm still learning. I get a learning curve here. Lori Knowles is our deputy chief in charge of EMS, and Steve Mitchell is our EMS captain. On behalf of the men and women of the Stafford County Fire and Rescue, the career and volunteer staff, EMS, we all know this, that it's most of what we do in the fire service. However, it's often the most underappreciated and overlooked thing that we do. And it's really nice, it's a nice gesture for the board to recognize our quality EMS providers, and I'd just like to thank all of you for that.
And now we would like to ask Mr. Campbell to come forward. And many of you in the community know that Mr. Campbell is known as T. Campbell. So I'd like to present this proclamation to you, honoring and recognizing Thurman Campbell for 16 years of service on the Stafford Regional Airport Authority. Whereas, Thurman Campbell is a well-known retired local businessman who served on the Stafford Regional Airport Authority for 16 years. And whereas, Mr. Campbell has been an active member of the community and is known for his scrupulous honesty and being a friend to all. And whereas, a great example of his leadership happened when, in 2004, the airport received notice that the company providing fixed base operations would depart in two weeks. Mr. Campbell averted a crisis by proposing that the airport take over those operations. He secured the necessary equipment and training for operations, and the airport still provides its fixed base operations to this day. And whereas, he acted as chairman for the authority for several years and served as treasurer during which the time he became, began, the ongoing practice of bringing in an independent auditor for yearly audits. And whereas, Campbell initiated negotiations for the airport's first corporate tenant, and he facilitated the Wings and Wheels Festival that was attended by thousands annually. And whereas, he also worked with then-Speaker of the House, Bill Howell, to have Stafford County resident, Mr. Randy Burdette, appointed by Governor Mark Warner as the Director of the Virginia Department of Aviation. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors on this, the 15th day of May, 2018, that it be and hereby does recognize and comment Mr. Thurman T. Campbell for his service to the Stafford Regional Airport Authority and to the citizens of Stafford County. Thank you so much. I even learned a few things in that proclamation about you that I didn't know.
So did I.
Would you like to make a few comments?
Sure. I want to thank you very much. Thank the board for their support of the Airport Authority through the years. We really appreciate it. And the Airport Authority members, past and present, Board of Supervisors members, past and present, have done so much and made the airport possible for this community. But thank you so much. I really appreciate this, and God bless.
Thank you very much. Next, we have an update by Mr. Curry Roberts with the Fredericksburg Regional Alliance. Mr. Roberts.
Madam Chairman, thank you very much. I thought T. was going to introduce me, so disappointed I had to walk up out here without just some grand introduction from him. You did mention Public Safety Week and Memorial Week. I had the pleasure for serving for four years with your former sheriff, Charlie Jett, on the Construction Committee for the Virginia Public Safety Memorial that's now in Capitol Square. We were the last of 50 states to actually recognize those who lost their lives in the line of duty. And Charlie and I had a great time on that committee, and it was a wonderful project. And the next time you're down at the Capitol, I'd hope you'd go by and take a look at it. Am I teed up here?
Yes.
As you know, I try to come by once a year and have a conversation with you all about the activities with the Alliance. And I would stress, I'd like to make it a conversation rather than just a simple, dry presentation. These are marketing metrics, a little bit different format, but the same numbers that many of you have seen previously. 2018, year-to-date, we do have one announcement. That actually was an expansion that we assisted in another locality where we were able to get them Commonwealth of Opportunity funds. Pipeline continues to grow. This was through March 30th, but when I get to the marketing calendar, you'll note that we were sort of backloaded this year on marketing trips, on direct marketing trips, both on our own and with the state. So I would expect by year-end that the number of projects and prospects in the pipeline are probably going to be up in the 50s, so we'll continue to grow the pipeline. Web sessions are down, but that's on purpose. We had been using Google AdWords, but we found that when we were listing that logistics was a prospect, we were getting a lot of inquiries from people who had customer complaints for UPS and FedEx. I handled one on Christmas Eve. A gentleman wanted to complain that we had somehow broken his china, and it took me 15 minutes to figure out he was really looking for the UPS office. So we decided to save about $15,000 next year, plow that back into our website, make it much more interactive and much more vibrant, and then we would also redeploy the funds for more direct marketing. You'll notice that we have grown the number of private sector investors. If I took this chart, we are now up to 45, soon to be 46, private sector investors. If you go back to 2016, we had 25 private sector investors. So we've had significant growth there. Of the projects, the new projects, the 21-year-to-date projects, Stafford has been able to submit a response to those, whether they came through us directly or through VDP to us. This is the marketing calendar. I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on it, but if you went back and looked at the clusters, which are advanced manufacturing and logistics, cybersecurity, software, shared services, you would see those represented here. One that was particularly interesting was actually Data Center World in San Antonio. Yes, we have continued to see a significant increase in inquiries from data center developers. One that we're going to be working with the county, we've already alerted the county to a fairly significant RFI that will be circulating this week throughout the region. We are the only region in Virginia that received that RFI, and it was direct to us. There are four other localities who received it, but I think we're in pretty good shape from a competitive standpoint to put forward a good response. That's actually been a year and a half in the making for us to get that RFI. And I think when the county sees it, they'll see how significant it is. So good luck on that one. Data Center World was not the developers, it was suppliers to data centers, which is what we found most interesting about it. These are people that provide whatever widget needs to go into a data center, and we picked up about five prospects there. The reason we found that interesting is because of the lower cost of doing business in our region than it is to locate closer into Ashburn, Virginia. Their suppliers continue to look outside of sort of the northern Virginia Ring for locations, and that is an area we can compete very well in. Marketing calendar for next year has not been released by VDP, so I don't have what we will be looking at for the coming year for 2019. We do circulate that to our local partners for input as to which ones that they would think were important to them. This is a little bit of a before and after. About a year ago, I said...
Ms. Mauer.
Yes, ma'am.
I actually have a question on the previous slide, the marketing trips. You guys used to go to, and maybe it's not on this marketing calendar, but some of the commercial real estate larger events. Are you still attending those? Is that not considered an aspect of the marketing calendar?
It is on a strategic basis, especially around site consultants. There is one on here, which is IAMC.
Okay. Is that the international?
That's Industrial and Commercial Property Management Companies. And that was in Richmond. We actually co-hosted a reception with some other regional alliances with VDP at the governor's mansion.
Okay.
So it is not a priority, but we're trying to be very strategic about it.
So one of the advantages to those is you have, A, a lot of site consultants there, but a lot of, I guess, people that want to open up new locations and whatnot, although that's more retail-centered. And that's the same event that we're talking about here?
This one is a mix. This one is a mix of both retail developers but also industrial, commercial. And so it was a little bit of a win-win. We don't focus as much on retail as the localities do, except where we're asked to. We tend to go...
ICSC is what I'm thinking of. That's the event that I'm thinking of, ICSC. It took me a while. It's been 10 years since I've been in commercial real estate. So I had to go in the Wayback Machine and figure that one out, so...
We typically do not attend that, but what we often do for your county and for one of the other jurisdictions is we provide a lot of demographic information that goes into the marketing pieces that you all take and hand out at those events.
Okay.
We would tend to focus on commercial realtors and site consultants where they're touching the clusters we're marketing to.
Right.
The region-wide clusters. If a local government wanted our assistance on a certain retail initiative, we're happy to help, but that's not been our focus.
And I know this question isn't for you, but while it's hot on my mind, are we attending ICSC, Mr. Foley? Or are we waiting till our new Economic Development Director gets in?
Yes.
Did you know? Ball out.
We've certainly been in transition for a while, and our new director has actually already signed up for some of these different conferences, and we'll have to follow up as to where he is on that particular one.
Okay.
But we've been in transition for a while, as you're aware.
Yes. Yes, sir. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. On the left-hand side, the Birking Institute, over the last two years, surveyed about 400 economic development organizations across the country, and they asked, how were you spending your time five years ago, and then how do you spend your time today? And on the left is what it looked like, frankly, for the past 25 or 30 years with the economic development organizations. So what we did is they then put up a chart that showed that it's not so much that there's more time being created, there's not less time being spent on business attraction, but there is more time being spent on some other areas that frankly show a much broader view of what economic development is and how to stimulate and cultivate an economy. So what we did is we took that chart and we redeployed it around how we work and what occupies our time. And as you can see, business attraction still accounts for about 60% of what we spend our time on. But we do spend time on innovation and entrepreneurship. We have been working on a tech transfer initiative with Dahlgren, which is taking longer than any of us had hoped to, but we were actually in a discussion yesterday at the base about that. Defense contractors...
What kind of tech transfers are those?
Well, if you look at especially NSWC, Madam Chairman, they hold about 250 patents that have been released for commercialization by the Department of Defense. So they've basically been released in hopes that somebody would commercially apply those and potentially sell them back to the Navy or sell them to other customers. And there's Dahlgren, there are federal labs who've been very good at that and pushing it out, and there are actually a lot of state resources in Virginia, CIT, that we can bring to bear on that. But Virginia's federal labs have tended to lag a number of other states. And it's now, this came up as part of a strategic planning initiative that regional economic developers from across the state worked with VDP on last year as a result of the Jay-Lark Study of VDP. And trying to do a better job with our federal labs was one of those priorities. So the Governor's Commission was meeting at Dahlgren yesterday, and we brought this up as something that seems to have fits and starts, but we just never can quite get it across the line.
Okay.
And we're not, it's not more work for the base, just help, just give us the stuff and let us go take a look at it and see what the low-hanging fruit is. B2B, last year in a couple of our international trips, one to Canada and one to the UK, we came across about 15 defense and security-related contractors looking to do business in the United States, but they need U.S. partners. So about 10 of them gave us white papers, and then we, as to what they were looking for, what their products are, what they can sell, and what type of a partner do they need. And it ran the gamut, and ran the gamut from cybersecurity to actual manufactured products to logistics. Out of that, we've got about eight of those contractors who are actually either in letter of intent stage or continuing discussions with contractors across the region. That's a little bit different. No other EDOs in Virginia do that. Now, when the state runs across a prospect like that, that wants a B2B introduction and then they're in that field, they refer them to us. They don't, there are no other economic development organizations really want to do that. But because of the uniqueness of our defense contracting community here, we saw it as an opportunity, and so we've tried to capitalize on that. We are working on assistance for two startups, which again is not something we would normally do, but they're unique, sort of one of the kind things that would enhance the overall offerings of the region. New Richmond Ventures is a venture capital fund at a Richmond. Strengthen capacity. I'll come back to Transformation 2026. I know, Madam Chairman, you've heard us talk a little bit about this at FAMPO, and I'll cover that a little bit later in another slide. Business-ready sites, we continue to work with our localities, and again, I'll talk a little bit more about that and some work we've done with your county this past year on business-ready sites. And then the University of Mary Washington Center for Business Research. We have funded this past year, along with the Chamber and the university, a study on, it's hard to describe this, but for those of you on FAMPO, it's the difference between the published standards under SMART scale and what the resulting scores were. And there being quite a variation. And we thought that the university was a better person to do that study than a local government or FAMPO who has to deal with VDOT on a routine basis. But we have a draft of that report. Hopefully, that will be out in June. And then foreign direct investment, we have not historically had a comprehensive strategy on that, and we have tried to figure out where there are some strategic opportunities for us, as low a cost as we can do it. And we basically treat Canada as a 51st state. And going on a marketing trip to Canada actually is less expensive than going to California, so, and we have found some significant opportunities there. A little bit on capacity building. As I did mention, we participated very strongly in the strategic planning process at VDP last year. I guess no good deed goes unpunished. The Speaker put me on a Business Developing and Marketing Committee at VDP. I'm a General Assembly appointee to that. There are nine members, five regional economic development organizations, and four local governments, and they basically reflect the GOV Virginia regions. B2B, I did mention that, except there were 16 contractors in Stafford County that we contacted, and we have ongoing discussions with four of them and the international contractors. I actually had a conference call with one of those yesterday. Dominion Contractors Event, in working with the defense contractors, we found that all of them want to diversify into more private sector opportunities. Dominion Energy has a veteran preference in their contracting program, but contracting with Dominion is still different than a federal contract. So we had about a two-hour briefing one evening with the supply chain folks and 30 contractor representatives from across the region on how to do business with Dominion. With one week notice, and Supervisor Mauer participated in this, Senator Warner's office wanted to meet with the contractors about the backlog on security clearances, and we actually had to move the meeting to a larger location. actually had to move the meeting to a larger location.
Ms. Mauer.
So as I follow on to that, and it's on my list of things to do, one of the questions that came up was the authority to operate. So I'm not going to go into large detail on this, but it was about security clearance, the background check process. The backlog of the security clearance background check process has a significant chilling effect on our local economic development, just for the board's edification. However, further on to that, we talked about authority to operate. So once you get these really exciting IT systems, and this gets into a sub-conversation that we had about the appropriations process for IT and the utilization of newer, better technology and getting that into the government, and I said, you know, you can speed up the acquisition process, but you're going to run up against the authority to operate process. And what that is, is it's the government's permission process to utilize technologies on their network. And what he asked of the Fredericksburg region, and so I'm going to throw this back on you, Mr. Curry, is to come up with some solutions and some ideas that he can take back to his staff. And as, you know, while you're here, because it was on my checklist of things to do, I would ask that you put together a group of local defense contractors and a working group to discuss this particular challenge that the local defense market finds in bringing new technologies, more importantly, selling new technologies to the federal government. So if you can please—
Sure.
—add that to, because I think it's a regional issue, and it affects all of the bases within the region. And it's an excellent project for at least the Fredericksburg region to bring back some thoughts and suggestions back to the senator.
Good idea.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for reminding me.
Yeah. Well, that wasn't my intent, but okay. I'll, was his national security advisor, was she in the discussion on that?
I believe so. I believe so, and I kind of offered up the Fredericksburg region that we would take on that challenge, and I just—
In other words, you offered me up to take on that challenge, right?
You or our local EDA, or, you know, but I think it's—
Not a problem.
It's more regionally, should be more regionally addressed than here in Stafford County.
Absolutely. As was that event, so that's fine.
Oh, Ms. Shelton.
I'm sorry, I wasn't part of that. Actually, I know of some solutions that have been proven that the non-appropriate find down in San Antonio did to address the ATO issue, so I'd like you to contact me later, and I'll share with you the case studies from those. And those were brought up to the Department of Homeland Security for incorporation into their acquisition lifecycle, so.
Was that around the Air Force in San Antonio?
Yes.
Okay.
So, okay.
Need for secured leasable space, as you all know, as one of our outcommutes, we do not have leasable, secured, or for that matter, any sizable leasable SCIF space. We have been in discussions with a developer out of Northern Virginia who ironically also has a facility they're developing in Texas. And hopefully, the owner of that will be touring the region here in the next couple of months, but at the moment, most contractors, if they need this kind of space, they typically go up to Chantilly to a facility. And there are at least two other facilities of that size, they're about 80,000 square feet.
Yes, Ms. Mauer.
Okay, so I have some concern on that, because typically, when you do, are you talking about somebody coming in and building SCIF space, and then they're selling shares to other companies? Because SCIF space, you can't pre-design it. You have to have a requirement, and then DSS comes in, and so, and by the way, there's already pre-built-out, previously certified SCIF space in the Barrett Heights area, some large, pre-built-out SCIF space, no longer certified, because as soon as a tenant moves out, the certification goes away. So explain to me, given the, I mean, first, there has to be a requirement, and then they certify the space, what's your solution for that?
Well, it's not my solution. It's the developer's solution. I'm not the developer. This is a developer that has found various sponsors for space that can be co-location space for various periods of time.
Okay.
And you can lease a desk all the way to lease a room.
Okay, and that's my question, is that it's—
And it, but it is a building. It is a building, and it's not a shared building with some other use. So it's easier to get the certification on it than it would be that if you took an existing space where it's only one floor, and it's the middle floor, and there are tenants all the way around you who are not secured.
Right.
That's much more difficult, as I understand it.
Okay.
The reason I went and found a developer is I know I have just exhausted my complete knowledge of how this works.
Okay.
So the purpose was to get somebody who really understands this.
So if there is interest in doing that, and the reason, you know, having it in the middle of a floor is difficult is because you have to retro, there's—
Yes.
A very costly retrofitting of the ceiling and the floor, and I'm not going to bore you with all the details.
Correct.
However, we have previously certified vacant SCIF space available in North Stafford that would be a lot easier to get re-certified if there was that interest, because the upfront construction costs have already been sunk, just for your knowledge, whatever it's worth.
There may be some other low-cost options for big amounts of space, even within Stafford County.
Okay, in the essence of time, that's okay.
I'm going as fast as I can.
We're going back to Mr. Roberts.
Business-ready site program, we did complete a business-ready site audit for an assemblage of land, about 400 acres over by the airport. We paid for 75% of that audit, and that has been delivered to the county. Regional site inventory, there are only 23 certified business-ready sites in all of Virginia out of 600 sites that are on Virginia Scan at VDP. We have none within the region. The good news is if we get, if, there are some that are close, but they're privately held, and the owners won't put a price on it. And you can't get certification from the state if there is not a price certain on that property. Data center further site identification because of inquiries, both directly to the county and then to us across the region. As you all know, we put out a marketing piece about two years ago on 16 data center-ready sites. There's a lot of interest around those sites. Because of that, we've been working with Dominion and Rappahannock to now look at what would be the next generation of sites that we could go to, especially those closest to transmission lines, where you can upgrade service without going through residential neighborhoods. We have been identifying parcels. I've actually talked to you all about a couple of parcels that have popped up in the southern part of the county. We did prepare a briefing book on Economic Development 101 in Virginia and how the state operates, and how we operate, and how it all interworks here, and we have presented that to your new economic development director. And then I'm not sure if your county administrator's gotten a letter, but will shortly, about the monkey net and the next phase of that. As you all recall, you signed up to participate in that study as a GO Virginia grant, covering not only our region, but Northern Neck and Middle Peninsula. 14 jurisdictions signed up to participate in that, so the cost to the county is going to be less than the $5,000 originally envisioned. And second, the county administrator will be asked to appoint someone to the working group who looks at broadband deployment, not only in Stafford, but across the region. This is something that we went over with FAMPO about six or eight months ago. I know there's a lot of discussion, always a lot of discussion, about doing the easiest thing, which is moving federal agencies here so people don't have to drive north. That's a, that really is a very easy thing to do from an economic development standpoint. Marketing to the federal government is really easy. The only point of this is doing that alone does not solve the outcommute. And there's a question that the region needs to answer, do we really want to solve the outcommute? And if we do, by when? Do you want to get to net zero by some point in the future? And what's our plan to get there? And it takes more pieces than just business attraction. What these two slides show, as you know, we start with a 60,000 outcommute for the region. That's based on census data. If you looked at VEC data, it would be a higher number. I could bore you with the reasons for that, as to why it's higher. The good news is our labor force continues to grow at about 1.9% a year across the region, but jobs created within the region are only growing at 1.7%. So if this trend continues with that gap, the outcommute by 2032 would actually grow to 72,000. If you were trying to close the gap by 2032, you'd have to have a job growth rate of about 4.2% year-over-year for the next 14 years. And no, I know of no region in the country that's ever done it for that sustained period of time. The point of this is not to offer a solution, but just to simply say, these are sort of the information points, the touchpoints that we've got, that we've been looking at. If we were going to have a regional strategic plan, and that has come up, that we really do not have a regional strategic economic development plan, this does not hamstring localities from what they are doing, but these are the sort of regional things that there would need to be some consensus on, that take a broader view of job growth than just simply economic development and trying to attract industries into the region. I put this in there as an information item. I haven't had too much trouble stimulating discussion so far, but that's what this was in here for. And I had shared it with FAMPO. The elected members of our board asked that I put this in the updates when I provided it to the local governments. And then that's our current list of investors, both private and public. Couple of other things worked on with the county. I did work with your Commissioner of Revenue on his legislation, better defining the application of merchant capital tax to logistics and distribution centers. Unfortunately, that was successful. I did also provide Delegate Thomas with talking points on that, and then a couple of talking points on his SMART scale legislation, one being, why do we not count tourists and travel when the state spends about $30 million a biennium attracting tourists to Virginia because it's a big industry, but yet we don't count them as business travelers? As an economic developer, I found that kind of interesting, but that was one of the talking points we provided. I have spoken with your county administrator, and now that the new economic development director is on board, one other jurisdiction in the region about a year and a half ago took advantage of what's called allies orientation at VDP. It's a great overview of economic development from the state level down, how they interact with us, how they go get leads, where the locality's roles are, where the regional organizations' roles are. And that was with members of their Board of Supervisors and EDA. I would be happy to work with your new economic development director and county administrator to get that set up at some point in the future. I think you all would really enjoy that presentation. Takes about a half a day.
Okay.
So with that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Does anybody from the board have any questions for Mr. Curry? Thank you very much for your presentation, and I'm sure all of us individually or collectively, not together, only two of us at one time, will maybe meet with you. I know Mr. Cavalier is the representative on the FRA, and we appreciate what he's done there. But as you know, economic development is what it's all about, so we can always be doing more. And thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
And we really do look forward to you working with Mr. Foley and with our new economic development director.
So do we. Actually, we have a meeting with him on Thursday.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Now, we will go into presentations by the public. If you would like to comment, please remain courteous and respectful to the audience and to board members. It's also important for you to keep track of your time at the podium. The board would like to give all interested individuals a chance to speak. Please try to stay on schedule, ensure that everyone, so that we can ensure that everyone will have time to address the board. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the board. If you're here to speak about one of this evening's public hearings, please refrain from making those comments until the appropriate time during the 7:00 PM meeting. Speak into the microphone slowly, clearly, and loudly. Begin by stating your name and address. Please refer to the light on the podium to monitor the time of your presentation. Green indicates the start of your presentation. Yellow indicates that you have one minute to summarize your comments, and red obviously indicates that your time is complete. And with that, I have one speaker card. We'll start with Mr. Phil Hornig.
My name is Phil Hornig. I live at 1012 England Drive. I am vice president of the Friends of Wide Water State Park, and what you have before you is an annual report of our work of this past year. I'd like to begin by making the comment that none of this would have been possible without the efforts of Mark Dudenhaffer, when he was in the House and on the board, and Jack Cavalier. Jack is a member of our Board of Directors and very much appreciated for the effort that he's done for us. I'll try to give a summary here as best I can. On April 23rd of 2017, a group of citizens gathered together to support Wide Water State Park as a citizens' support group. On May of that year, we met and formed the Friends of Wide Water State Park. On June 12th of 2017, the firm of Herschel-Washer Attorneys at Law entered an pro bono agreement with us to help us, and they have provided our articles of incorporation, revision of those, our federal ID number, an extensive set of bylaws, and our 501(c)(3) application that is before the IRS, and we hopefully have that very soon so that we can begin working and grant acquisition funds to support the park. Our mission statement is, we exist to assist and support the operation programs of Wide Water State Park. We have developed, we're in the process of working with DCR to develop a 2018-2022 Strategic Action Plan. We have six goals there. Basically, the first one is membership, and trying to start and build our membership so that we can support the activities and needs of the park. We have recent, in reference to visitors' experience goal, we have recently completed a two-day, two, two-day planning seminars with DCR in developing the visitor experience master plan for this park. And it was a very successful event, and we were all involved in that. And regarding our history goal, one of the hallmarks of the park obviously is going to be the water access to the Potomac River and Aquia Creek and its associated activities. Another is its history. We were, we're working to assist DCR in recognizing and celebrating a unique history of Wide Water Peninsula from pre-colonial times to the times when the park has been created. A signature of the park will be the celebration of the accomplishments of Professor Samuel Pierpont Langley and his contributions to the fields of astrophysics and aeronautics that occurred at Wide Water. Not many people realize that at Wide Water, Langley successfully demonstrated for the first time in the history of mankind that heavier-than-air mechanical flight was possible, and he did so with three successful flights in 1896 with his new flying machine. And that was quite an accomplishment. We plan to celebrate that. In reference to our environmental goal, this is a third of our hallmarks of the park. We're going to be working with the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation, the Virginia Association of Parks, and Marshall Day to put together an environmental study for Brent Park, Brent Point, Aquia Creek, and the Potomac River. We are currently working with Stafford County Public Schools, exploring the possibility of having the 1,100 acres of the park become a living, year-round, hands-on classroom for its students and the community. In reference to the technology goal, Virginia parks have a reputation of being the best parks in the country. Smart parks, technology is envisioned to be the future of all state parks. We are working with DCR, Marshall Day, and Virginia Association of Parks to become the flagship smart park in the Commonwealth. Finally, in reference to our goal with veterans, we understand that there are in excess of 38,000 veterans living in Stafford. We're working with the Veterans Advisory Group to help make Wide Water State Park an ideal environment for the veterans and their families to relax, rehabilitate, reintegrate, and reconnect. And lastly, as I go, I want to say this. We appreciate your support, continued support, and we are quite concerned about what's happening in Richmond in reference to the annual, biannual budget. There is money, capital improvement money, and the— There is money, capital improvement money in the House and Senate for the capital improvement. What is missing is, is in the House budget. There's no operational funds to operate this, operate this park this year, and the park will probably get his occupancy permit this year, this month. So anything you can do to help us move that along, we appreciate it very much.
Okay.
Thank you so very much.
All right.
I ran a little bit over, but thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hornig. Really appreciate your efforts. Would anyone else in the board chambers like to speak to the board?
Dan Hicks, 1002 Bailey Court, and good afternoon, members of the board. Today, I'd like to talk about, or request the repeal and the replacement of the current Stafford County SBL Incorporated agreement regarding Little League baseball. The agreement's dated January 6, 2017. SBL Incorporated receives $165 from each Stafford County youth for playing recreational baseball. It's broken down something like this. $5 per player is passed to Park and Rec. That's kind of like a pass-through collection, and all, it sounds to me like, almost like a undisclosed or unidentified tax. $27, approximately $27 is used to pay for a tee-shirt, cap, and socks for each player. That leaves $133 per player that goes to SBL's bank account to do with whatever they Baseball fields are scheduled and monopolized by SBL Incorporated for free. SBL does not pay for the use of any Stafford facilities. Two points to follow are kind of important here. Recreation baseball players compete in approximately eight to 10 games with mixed skill level players. This creates a frustration level because you've got skilled players throwing the ball at players that have never caught a ball before, so they get a little nervous about hurting somebody. The Warriors, SBL Warrior teams, All-Star tax teams costs are covered by that excess. That's where the $133 goes for. So if you're a Warrior, you get to play approximately 20 extra games plus your regular SBL games. That's like 30 games excess, thanks to the benefit of everybody else paying that $165 share. Next. So, next, please. So this Thursday, I'm going to present to the Sports Commission a proposal called the Independent Baseball League. IBL supplements SBL Incorporated as a bridge option between recreation and high school or a high-cost travel baseball. Stafford County residents will have access to Park and Rec's sports division ballfields. IBL and SBL Incorporated will be required to pay for the use of the ballfields during tournament play. Funds passed to Stafford Park and Rec's sports department, and I'd like to see the county to encourage independent baseball teams in Stafford County. Next. Quickly, this is a kind of a pro-con thing, a slide that shows what's happening with SBL and what the IBL might do. I'll concentrate on the IBL. It's not a corporation. It's an individual local baseball team created by moms, dads, uncles, grandpas. Fees are established by the teams, and plays the weekend only. So SBL and the Rec team would play during the, during the week, and the independent teams would play during the weekend. So I'd like you to consider that, and we'll talk about it more. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address the board that's in the board chambers? If so, please come down. All right, with that, I'll close the public comment period. Just want to remind board members to pull items off the consent if you so wish. And we do have the school board coming over at...
Four.
Is it four? Is it four or four?
Madam Chair, it is about four o'clock.
Okay. So if board members could try to keep their comments as short as possible, that would be appreciated.
Mrs. Mauer.
I'm going to defer, with the exception of pulling item number 17 off the agenda.
Ms. Shelton.
I'll make mine very short. I just want to remind people that this is Military Appreciation Month, and we have some very significant challenges with our vets in Stafford County, and I want to, want to reach out to you guys to look forward to some support that we will have down in Richmond to allow us to have veteran service officers into the courtrooms to help represent those cases where courts do not understand the rights of the vets. Thank you.
Mr. Snellings.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Just very briefly, tomorrow's a very special day in Stafford, May 16th. It was the 200th anniversary, is the 200th anniversary of the Mount Olive Baptist Church. That is the oldest African-American church in Stafford and one of the oldest in the state. So I'm going to congratulate them. I'll be attending their services this weekend, and they've done a great job for the community. Thank you.
Mr. Cavalier.
I'll defer.
Mr. Cohen.
I'll defer.
Mr. Dudenheffer. And Ms. Bumke.
I'm going to defer as well. Okay, so we have one item pulled off the consent agenda. First, if we could have the report of the county attorney, Mrs. McLendon.
I have no report at this time, Madam Chairman.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Foley.
Madam Chair, we're going to pass on the construction report unless there's a particular question. I did want to mention that the board report that you get, which has statistical information, this is the last month that you will have that, although we're going to transfer that to our website. We're going to try to create a webpage that will track performance indicators, which is the majority of what's in that report. So it, it may be pared down with the most useful, actionable information on our website as we go forward that won't be a part of your board agenda in the future. That is actually based on input from you all about the value of that being on this agenda versus in another location where we can track some of that data. So just wanted to mention that to you, and we will defer other information today because of the time.
Okay. All right, with that, do I have a motion for the consent minus item number 17? Okay, any discussion? Cast your vote, please. Tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously. Mrs. Mauer, item 17.
And actually, this is, I just have a quick question from Maria. I received a question from one of my constituents regarding whether or not this contract was competitively procured. I can see that we're writing on a school board contract, it looks like, and we're coming to the tail end. When will it be recompeted? And the reason for my interest is, is that for many years when this was originally procured, we only had one real trash vendor here in Stafford County. Now we have two, so I want to make sure that we open up competition.
Thank you, Maria Parat, Chief Financial Officer. And Ms. Mauer, we are writing another contract. We generally do renew these every several years. I'll make sure that we do not write a contract the next time we go out for bid, but do actually open it up.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on item 17? Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, any discussion? All right, cast your vote for item 17. That motion passes unanimously. At this point in time, we are, have item number 21, unfinished business. We will be meeting with the school board upstairs in ABC Conference Room, and after that, we will come back if we, if time allows for closed meeting session, correct?
Yes, Madam Chair, we will need to finish by about 5:00 or 5:15, so that'll give us some time for a closed session before 6:00.
Okay, all right. So with that, the meeting is adjourned upstairs. Well, the meeting continues. It is not adjourned. The meeting continues upstairs in ABC. Conference Room, and we're bringing it back to our board chambers. And with that, Mr. Snellings.
A resolution to authorize closed meeting, whereas the Board of Supervisors desire to hold a closed meeting for, one, discussion and consideration of the disposition of public real property, where such discussion and open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position; two, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members regarding a specific legal matter requiring provision of legal advice and counsel, by counsel; three, discussion and consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose; four, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members pertaining to probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating and litigating posture of the board. Whereas pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A3, comma, A7, comma, and A8, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. So move, Madam Chairman.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, going into closed session? Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously. We are now in closed session. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion carries 6-2-0 with one absent. Thank you. We will return for the 7:00 meeting. Supervisors meeting to order. Mrs. Shelton is going to lead us in the invocation, and Mr. Snellings is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please stand.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we gather to make decisions for our community, and may we only use our best skills and judgment and keep ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of all the matters that have been placed before us by our constituents, and always act in accordance with what's in best for our community and our fellow citizens. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The board is honored to recognize Mr. Frank McCarty and his son, Mr. Mark McCarty, with White Oak Equipment. Will you please join Mr. Cohen at the dais for presentation of a proclamation commending you for your service to the community through the annual Oyster Roast fundraiser/charity/benefit?
Good evening, Frank. And Mark. Thank you for coming up. Yes, one of the best events that is in Stafford County is the Oyster Roast, and Mr. McCarty started this many years ago, and this year, it has raised in total, over all the years, $1 million for people who are in need. Yes, really. And so, quite honestly, there's very, there's a lot of things we get to do as supervisor, but this is one of the best things that really there is, is to recognize terrific people in our community. And so, the board has a proclamation for you that you can hang up, and when all of us keep swinging by White Oak Equipment, we get to see you, and we can see this if you'd like. So I'll read it, even though this is probably not the exciting part, but hearing from you will be. Whereas Frank McCarty, owner of White Oak Equipment, Inc., hosted the first Oyster Roast benefit 34 years ago to assist the family of his friend and employee Jim Dawson during his struggle with cancer, and whereas throughout the years, the Oyster Roast has raised more than $1 million, and every dollar has benefited 32 recipients and their families and two local organizations. And whereas, the Oyster Roast is a highly anticipated community gathering sponsored by White Oak Equipment in conjunction with Friendship Baptist Church and Fairview Baptist Church, as well as dozens of other dedicated community members and businesses. And whereas, White Oak Equipment Oyster Roast is a wonderful example of the local community coming together to assist those in need, and Frank McCarty is the embodiment of a remarkable friend to the local community. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors on this 15th day of May 2018, that it be, and hereby does, recognize White Oak Equipment and Frank McCarty for service and dedication to those in need in Stafford County and the surrounding communities. Thank you, sir.
I really feel like I don't deserve this. This is a Lord's work. All I was doing is what the Lord expected me to do. I can name, I could keep you here all evening telling you tales about what the Lord has done through this Oyster Roast, but let me tell you, twice, I canceled the Oyster Roast because of reasons, and the Lord stepped in and got people involved, and we continued on. Both times, it made it better. The Lord will provide the people, the money, and the place. Let Him do the work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And it, just so you know, this year, they had over 170 volunteers that helped. They come to do it. He doesn't have to go and ask anybody. So it's really a phenomenal activity. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Next, we are proud to recognize Mr. David Shotwell, a teacher at Colonial Forge High School and director of its award-winning robotics program. Mr. Shotwell, will you please join Mrs. Mauer at the dais, as well as Joel Griffith, who's on the EDA?
Mrs. Shotwell, you too. Huh? Oh, I suck. It's Mrs. Collins, but it's still your wife. Yes, yes, so... Shannon's going to take the pictures. So this goes back to my EDA days, and which is why we have the chairman of the EDA here with us. Mr. Shotwell has come before the EDA. I served on the Economic Development Authority for almost a decade, and during that time, Mr. Shotwell would come before us every year, asking for money for his robotics program. And he has been in Stafford County for 30 years. He has been teaching in Stafford County for 30 years, and he's retiring this year, which he is the last remaining original governor's school teacher. So this is a big loss for all of Stafford County public schools, but we've always enjoyed you coming before the Economic Development Authority, and he would, he would do these robotics presentations with these children, and it is one of the most amazing things that Stafford County has to offer. And you have gone to nationals eight or nine times, and so in another area of what I do, I'm also on the Board of Directors for the Armed Forces Communications Electronics Association, and through there, he would get additional grants in order to pay for taking those children to nationals. And so we are very supportive of STEM education and very honored to present you with this proclamation today. And before I read the proclamation, I'd like Joel to say a few words.
I echo what Wendy has said. You came before us just last week with more amazing kids. I think you were saying that there's more girls than boys in the program now, so... Yeah, so that, so not only is it good for teaching, you know, the students' education about the future of technology and where it's going, but it's also getting the young ladies involved as well. So I commend you for what you do, day in and day out, single-handedly running this program, and for getting the kids not only interested, but achieving success as well. So congratulations.
And with that, whereas David Shotwell is a history teacher at Colonial Forge High School for the Commonwealth Governor's School, and has been a teacher in Stafford County for more than 30 years, he is also the only original governor's school teacher remaining in Stafford County. And whereas, Mr. Shotwell has coached the robotics team for the Regional Governor's School for 20 years, spending thousands of outside school hours encouraging students to learn more about science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. And whereas, he has worked with hundreds of students over the years, helping them to win multiple awards, including design, programming, and engineering, and inspiration awards. And whereas, Mr. Shotwell has focused on recruiting more girls for the robotics team, resulting in a record number participating this year. And whereas, Mr. Shotwell also encourages children to be interested in robotics and STEM by taking his team to do demonstrations in elementary schools around the area. And whereas, Mr. Shotwell's enthusiasm and love of students has made a difference in the lives of countless children, as well as in the Stafford County schools. And whereas, the Stafford Economic Development Authority sponsorship of the robotics program has empowered and enabled Mr. Shotwell to encourage and engage Stafford students. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors on this 15th day of May 2018... of May 2018 that it be, and hereby does, honor and commend Mr. David Shotwell for his work as a teacher and as a coach of the robotics team. Thank you very much, sir. Your service is commendable. And you're never one to speak much. Most of your students have to do the pitch, but if you would, if you would honor us with just a few words.
I would say that the thing that I have gives me the most pride the last couple of years is winning an award called the Engineering Inspiration and that is for going out into the schools and getting the younger kids excited about STEM activities and try to get them to get robotics teams started at their own schools. So we're slowly getting them into the schools throughout Stafford County and that's what I really, gives me the greatest amount of pride.
Yes, we're very proud of you. Thank you again. And thank you. And don't forget, still grant money available with FCA.
Every year, the Board has the pleasure of hosting the Historical Commission and the presentation of its annual Historic Preservation Awards. Mrs. Anita Dodd is here to introduce this year's winner. Ms. Dodd, will you please come up?
Good evening. Can everybody hear me? Is this on, okay. All right. In 2005, the Stafford County Historical Commission established Historic Preservation Awards to coincide with the designation of May as Historic Preservation Month. This program provides an opportunity to recognize individuals, groups, organizations, and businesses for their contributions to the preservation of Stafford County's history. Historic preservation plays an important role by preserving the cultural heritage of our community. It is important to celebrate that heritage and the contributions made by those dedicated to its preservation. The Stafford County Historical Commission is pleased to present our Historic Preservation Awards for the year 2017. The first, we have five awards this evening. The first is for the Stafford Armed Services Memorial Commission and its working group and I've been asked to invite those individuals that were participated in that to come forward and I think Dan Chishteser is going, pardon? It's going to, is going to actually give that award. I would like to say that the Armed Services Memorial was created to honor Stafford County's sons and daughters who have made the ultimate sacrifice in their service to our nation. It is also a memorial that honors all those that have served in our armed forces and is a visible reminder of the cost of that freedom, so.
I was told just to come up and say thank you and I do say thank you, but to have a retired lawyer speak before a captive audience is a very dangerous sort of situation. But I'm not surprised that this community raised the funds and did the work, did the design to build a memorial as beautiful as this is. Every time I go by it, I am stunned at how beautiful this memorial is and to the people that it honors. So thank you so much to the Historic Society for this award and I thank everybody, including those in the county that worked so hard to put this together and this working group and the commission, because they are a great group of people to work with. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, and I would ask that everyone remain until the end of the presentations, if that's okay? Okay. Our next award goes to Linda Silk Fletland. I'm hoping I didn't mess that up too badly. And she is receiving an award for her creation of the history walls at Stafford High School, the Jeff Rouse Center and the Rouser Building. The history walls at Stafford High School are a visual timeline across multiple decades, providing a context that cross-references local events with national events. The history walls at the Rouse, Jeff Rouse Center highlight the contributions to, of Stafford County's athletic champions. And the wall of African-American history at the Rouser Building commemorates Stafford County's 350th anniversary. These visual representations interpret different aspects of Stafford County's cultural heritage and are a dramatic educational tool. Our next award is going to go to the Newland Real Estate Group and Mr. Larry Carruthers is going to accept that award. The Newland Real Estate Group is being presented this award for their preservation of the night house located within the Embry Mill Housing Development. The night house is an example of a 19th and early 20th century Stafford County farmhouse. The original portion of the house is a log construction that was added on to somewhere around 1900. The preservation of the house followed the Secretary of Interior standards. The original elements of the building have been maintained whenever possible. Those that were beyond repair were replaced with in-kind materials. As Stafford County grows, we often lose these examples of Stafford's agricultural history. With its interpretive signage, this house contributes to the understanding of Stafford's rapidly changing landscape. So I thank you very much. Our next preservation award is going to the George Washington Foundation. So I think, if you will come forward, the Director of the Foundation, Bill Gardner, will be accepting this award. The reconstruction of this building has been an amazing journey. Archaeology provided the first clues as to its configuration. Research into architectural traditions and building techniques of the 18th century brought the building to its completion. Restoration craftsmen, including masons, timber framers, and carpenters, used period materials and tools to construct the house on its original foundation. The interpretive replica of George Washington's boyhood home is an interactive and hands-on experience for the visitors at Ferry Farm. Using reproduction furnishings in the house will allow guests to sit on the furniture and handle the same types of objects that the Washington family used. This is a unique experience for visitors of Stafford County. Thank you very much. Okay, so the next award is given to the Range Management Branch of the Quantico Marine Corps Base and Mr. Jay Woodfin will be accepting that award. Jay and his department have been working with the Stafford County Cemetery Committee for about two years, locating cemeteries that are within the portion of the base that was once part of Stafford County, Prince William County, and Falkir Counties. This was not an easy undertaking, but Jay made it seem easy. It certainly made it easier for the cemetery committee. Over the years, information about the cemeteries has been difficult to gather. With the help of his staff, Jay would locate the cemetery and flag a path to it for us to follow. We often heard, "It's only 200 meters that way." Without Jay and his staff, the information gathered from visiting these cemeteries would have been difficult at best to retrieve. Thank you very much. So I would just like to say thank you to all of you for helping to preserve Stafford County's cultural heritage and we enjoy doing this every year and it seems every year gets a little bigger, which makes it even better, because that means a whole lot more culture is being saved and Stafford County's history as well. So thank you so much, all of you.
So congratulations to all our winners and thank you for your contributions to remembering and recording Stafford County's history, past and present. At this point in time, we're going to move on to presentations by the public. If you would like to comment, please remain courteous and respectful to the audience and to Board members. It's important for you to keep track of your time at the podium. The Board would like to give all interested individuals a chance to speak. If you spoke about an item during the afternoon session, you may not speak about that same item again this evening. And if you wish to speak about one of the items scheduled for public hearing, please hold your comments until that public hearing has been open. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the Board. Speak into the microphone slowly, clearly, and loudly. Begin by stating your name and address. Please refer to the light on the podium to monitor the time of your presentation. Green indicates the start, yellow indicates you have one minute to summarize, and red indicates your presentation time is complete. At this point in time, I'm going to open it up to, I do not have any speaker cards this evening, so if you would like to speak, you may come down to the podium.
They'll see me on TV. Paul Waldowski, 8 Pickett Lane, in the Geri-Mandard Rock Hill District. Wow, I learned something today, that Colonial Forge High School is in the Rock Hill District because I saw a really neat presentation with science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. And yet, when I go to the school board, the representative is from the Hartwood District. Man, it's just amazing to me. How can Colonial Forge be in the Hartwood District? You don't have to worry, I'm going to create a proclamation and I'll give it all to you and I'll make sure I outline that aspect. Also, I want to remind you all that those of you elected in 2015, you've only been on the Board now two years, four months, and 15 days. Not two years and six months, like I hear sometimes. I just don't know. That's 46 days away. As I walk in this building, I always see water and sewer payments on the wall and I never get to put my county water and sewer bill in there, even though it says here, "A resolution to approve the Stafford Meadows Final Site Plan." Whereas, PNS Properties has submitted a site plan for the development of 218-unit apartment complex to be located on the north side of Route 610 between Routes 641 and 642. Now I keep asking, where was the Director of Utilities when we were supposed to get public water and sewer? Where was the county administrator, who was supposed to make sure that the occupation permits were there? So all of us citizens, who are now going to be represented on June 18th, 2018, at 2:00 PM, when I provide to the Board of Equalization that our property is recorded as 0.0000 acres, instead of 0.0281 acres. So the county owes me, I figured it out the other day, but they only had it online for part of it. But you owe me about $20,000 and if you owe me $20,000, we take the other 65, we should have enough money to go to the Director of Utilities so he can re-upgrade our water meters, so we can get a county water and sewer bill.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the Board? Okay, with that, I'm gonna, this evening, we have three public hearings. Our first public hearing is to authorize an extension to the Cox Communications Cable Franchise Agreement, which will be presented by the county's Chief Technology Officer, Mr. Michael Cannon. Mr. Cannon, do you have any?
Hi, I'm Michael Cannon, Chief Technology Officer. I'm actually going to defer to Brian Reinstadt, who was our chief negotiator for the Cox Cable Franchise Agreement. Want to thank him for all of his efforts.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you about our most recent franchise negotiation with Cox Communications. First little background, as far as the Cox coverage area, it's relatively small as compared to Comcast. Their subscribers can primarily be found in Falmouth, George Washington, and a few pockets in Hartwood, close to Geico. As for any prior issues, the county has experienced with Cox Communications, they've been few and far between. Quite frankly, in my time on the Telecommunications Commission, I can't remember the last time somebody came in to address an issue that they had with Cox in terms of service or infrastructure expansion. Additionally, any question that we ask of Cox Communications is typically answered in an expeditious nature. Now, on a side note, Cox was also more than willing to participate in our efforts to get the word out about discounted broadband services for students enrolled in the Free or Reduced Launch Program. Now with regards to this negotiation, really, we want to end up with a document as close to the Comcast agreement that was signed in December of 2016. The reason for that doesn't really stem from any issues we had with Cox, but quite frankly, we have a pending negotiation with Verizon coming up at the end of this year. We felt it very important to set a precedent with both of our other franchise providers going into that negotiation. And at the end of the day, I feel strongly that we ended up with such an agreement. Now some of the important highlights of the agreement. The density calculation of this agreement is 20 homes per mile along the public right-of-way, counted from the closest point of service. Homes within 300 feet of the street are counted in this calculation. Cox will continue to provide video service and any necessary equipment at no charge to county government and school facilities within its footprint. Cox will extend to new government and school facilities that are located within 200 feet from the public right-of-way within 180 days. Cox will pay the county an annual grant of 20 cents per subscriber per month. This grant is used to purchase equipment to support public, educational, and government access channels and related capital needs. And the agreement definitely includes provisions for customer service requirements, as well as enforcement provisions to ensure compliance. Not that we think that those will be necessary, but we thought they were important to have in there. The term of this agreement is for 10 years. At the end of the day, I feel, and the TCC agrees, that this agreement will serve the residents of Stafford County well. Additionally, coupled with the Comcast agreement, I believe it sets a strong precedent for our upcoming negotiation with Verizon and that one should be a lot of fun. I ask the Board to please vote to approve the county administrator's renewal of this agreement. I'd also like to thank Shannon Howell, Mike Cannon, Barrett Stork, who's back in the audience there from Cox, for all of their work on this agreement. If there are any questions, please fire away.
Does anyone have any questions? Don't think so. Thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we're going to open the public hearing on Item 22, Community Engagement: Authorizing Extensions to the Cox Communications Cable Franchise Agreement, Proposed Resolution Would anyone like to address the Board?
Paul Waldowski, 8 Pickett Lane, in the Geri-Mandard Rock Hill District. Now I do not agree with the renewal of anything for 10 years, because it's kind of like an interview when someone asks you the dumb question, "Where are you going to be in five years?" None of you can answer that. No human being can answer that. Is not a good practice and... practice, and it should be on a renewable aspect that's, because in 10 years, more than likely, none of you seven are going to be on the board. Very unlikely. Now, obviously, I'm a COMFAN, but I'm not a fan of Cox, because I have Xfinity. It's not Comcast anymore, it's Xfinity. And I believe, and you're only touching Falmouth, which should be a town, like it was in 1726. The George Washington District is gerrymandered, it was part of King George County. And the Hartwood District, every time I look, you want to do something to upgrade there, they don't want to make any progress. All you have to do is look at Poplar Road, it's full of potholes.
Mr. Wodowski, could you please stay on topic?
I am on the topic.
Oh, okay.
Every time I come up here, I get interrupted, and every time someone presents at a public hearing, the board is asked, "Are there any questions?" So, I want to bring it to the public's attention that, the reason there are no questions, either they know everything about what's going on, or they don't know anything about what's going on, and they're afraid to ask a question, because someone who's confrontational, like I am, will question your question. So, you're not going to get any more public speakers to come up here. And, like I said before, I'll just add this to my proclamation.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board on this public hearing? Okay, with that, I'll bring it back to the board. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve R18-112.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Mrs. Mauer.
I would like to thank Mr. Reinstadt for all of your hard work. This is, you've gone through several different negotiations. You always conduct yourself in a manner that is extremely professional, and I'm proud to have you as my appointee, even though I stole you. And thank you to staff as well.
All right. If there's no other discussion, please cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Item Number 23, Mr. Keith Dayton will present our next public hearing to consider condemnation and exercise of the county's quick-take powers for temporary and permanent easements in connection with the Juggins Road Improvement Project.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. May I have the computer, please? By way of background, the board previously authorized funding for the design and construction improvements to Juggins Road. This is in support of the new Moncur Elementary School. That school is scheduled to open in the fall of next year. Our road improvements, the design has been completed, we're in the right-of-way phase. We have the right-of-way that is required, with the exception of some right-of-way easements that are on the homeowners' association property for the Perry Farms subdivision. We have had extensive discussions with both the HOA Board and the management firm. They've all indicated willingness to convey the right-of-way easements that we need, but their bylaws require 2/3 of the 101 property owners to sign on in approval. We've been unable to meet that threshold. There's been very little, we've heard from the community in opposition, we just can't reach that number that is required. The area in question, this is the total road construction, reconstruction improvement at the lower end of that, the project limits is the HOA property just above Chadwick Drive. This is a little closer look at it. The road goes around in a 90-degree bend. That is not safe for the amount of traffic and the type of traffic that will be, need to access that new school, and so, we were trying to bring the road within VDOT Design standards. The plant that we are looking to acquire, towards the right of that parcel, is the right-of-way that we need, and then that strip that goes more or less through the center, those are the easements. We have to relocate utilities into that corridor. That would complete all we need to do as far as right-of-way. Specifically, we need about a tenth of an acre for actual right-of-way for the new road relocation, and much smaller amounts for utility and temporary construction easements to complete the project. Our acquisition consultant prepared an appraisal. That number was $2,565 for the right-of-way and the easements. We provided our updated bona fide offer on March 30th, and we haven't received a response. We do recommend approval of Resolution R1884, which would authorize quick-take condemnation proceedings. That would allow our utility relocations to proceed this summer. We have to get the utilities out of the way to get the road underway in order to meet the opening of the new Moncur Elementary next year. So, we have just enough time to go ahead and put that schedule together. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Any questions for Mr. Dayton? Okay, thank you, Mr. Dayton. With that, this is Item 23, Public Works: Consider the Condemnation and Exercise of the County's Quick-Take Powers in Connection with the Juggins Road Improvement Project for Temporary and Permanent Easements on Tax MAP 21-L-6-M, Proposed Resolution R18-84. I now open the public hearing for this item. Would anyone like to address the board?
Paul Wodowski, 8 Pickett Lane. After a public hearing with two, the applicant should be allowed to respond to any public comment before you take a vote. That's how public hearings are run. But I didn't want to yell out in the chambers. What was stated about bylaws, let me keep repeating to you all, HOA's Houses of Aristocrats are Virginia corporations, period. By law, it takes two membership to take any action, including dissolving the corporation. It's a Virginia statute. It's not a staff-insinuated type of aspect or figure what their interpretation is. Taking the corporation, just because you have the authority to do it, and you have no schedule that was presented to prove that if you take this land, that you're going to integrate this schedule, and you're going to stay on schedule, so you can make school number, elementary school number 19. It's not the new Moncur Elementary School yet. So, these are the facts.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board on this public hearing? Okay, with that, I'll close this public hearing and bring it back to the board. It's in the Griffiths-Widewater District. Mr. Cavalier?
Madam Chairman, I've spoken with the property manager and HOA, an HOA board member there, and they're in complete agreement with this action, and wish it to go forward to meet the schedule for the schools.
Second?
I'll make a motion for R18-84.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. Any discussion? All right, with that, cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. The next item is Item Number 24, Planning and Zoning: Consider an Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance Index of Official Road Names Regarding Renaming the Private Segment of Big Spring Lane, Proposed Ordinance O18-04. Mr. Harvey?
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Board Members. I'm Jeff Harvey, the Director of Planning and Zoning. What we have here tonight is something that's not very common for the board, but happens on occasion. It's to rename an existing road within the county. Just for some background, there are two ways in which roads are named in the county. One is for recordation of a subdivision plot that establishes new streets and lots, and two, through a public hearing process with the Board of Supervisors. May I have the computer, please? Thank you. We have a situation here where Big Spring Lane, in its current configuration, has a fork in the road. The northern fork of the road is private, whereas the main stem or southern area of the roadway is public. The road originally went in the alignment of the private road, came from Route 1, and then went up further north. That's the original alignment. Several years ago, an industrial piece of property was built further to the east, which reconstructed the road from a gravel road to a current public street standard. That created the situation to form the fork in the road. Since that time, there's not been a lot of development activity, until most recently, last year, a site plan was approved on this parcel here, 38102C, for Kelvick Construction. They have moved forward with their site plan to relocate their corporate headquarters from Orange County to Stafford County. In doing so, to comply with our ordinance requirements, they were required to reconstruct a portion of the private segment to their commercial site. That inquired widening the road to a 20-foot wide pavement section, and required asphalt pavement for the road segment itself. In doing so, the staff, in its zeal to try to fix a perceived problem with the addressing in this area, encouraged the owner of the business to designate a name for the road, and specifically changed the address for this new business to Kelvick Way. Unfortunately, through that process, procedure wasn't followed, and there's an existing dwelling on Parcel 38100 at the end of Big Spring Lane, which was not notified of that change. That was brought before the Community and Economic Development Committee last fall, and the issue was presented to the committee. Their recommendation was to move forward with a public hearing to change the name of the private street segment, in particular, to change it to Kelvick Way, in acknowledgement of the corporation's efforts to improve the roadway. In December, the board authorized moving forward with the public hearing pursuant to Ordinance O1804. During the planning commission deliberations, the commission heard testimony from the business owner, as well as the owner at the end of the property, and end of Big Spring Lane. At that point in time, there was consideration for a second street name for a portion of the property, or all the road segment, and that was Mineral Spring Lane. In the end result, the planning commission recommended that the board consider renaming the street by having two names. One would be Kelvick Way up to the edge of pavement from, for the existing business. And then where the widened paved road would narrow down to the narrow gravel road, that would become Mineral Spring Lane. So, you'd have Mineral Spring Lane, basically, to the last quarter-mile, and the first quarter-mile would be Kelvick Way. That's the planning commission's recommendation, and I believe they did that in a spirit of compromise, to try to balance the interests here. We have a business that's made substantial investment in the county, and we also have a homeowner at the end of the road that has a historic property, and Mineral Spring Lane would acknowledge that historic nature of that property. Staff supports the planning commission's recommendations, and I'd be more than happy answering questions.
Any questions for Mr. Harvey? This is Shelton.
Mr. Harvey, I know you answered this question earlier, I just want to answer it for the public. If you could point out where 7K Investments' property is, and what would happen if they developed that M1 out to that split property line?
Yes, Ms. Shelton. 7K Investments owns these two parcels here, which are zoned light industrial. They also own Parcel 103A, which is zoned agricultural. They had previously filed a rezoning on Parcel 103A, excuse me, they also own 38101, and then 102 and 102A. So, that was a pending rezoning that's been sitting dormant for a number of years. But that would possibly require the pavement to be extended along this private segment. Staff's and planning commission's recommendation is if the board wants to go with the two street names, that you modify Ordinance O1804 to recognize that Kelvick Way would be from the intersection of Big Spring Lane to the end of pavement, and then from the end of pavement to the terminus of the road, that be named Mineral Spring Lane.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Snelling.
Mr. Harvey, do we have any other streets or roads in the county that have two names, that you're aware of?
Yes, sir. We have a number of streets. There are some examples that are provided in the background report. Most of them change their name where you reach an intersection or some identifiable feature. The one that's probably most synonymous with this is American Legion Road and Rameth Church Road, where you have a crossing of Interstate 95 where the road name changes. And that's the identifiable feature. In this case, the identifiable feature would be going from paved wide road to a more narrow gravel road.
But if it, in the future, if it gets paved, then you're not going to have that feature. I mean, it just seems to me, I'm very familiar, obviously, with American Legion and Rameth, that's my district, but the difference there is 95, cuts it off. This seems like this could be very, very confusing, because if they pave it, there's not going to be an identifiable feature.
Mr. Snelling, that would be correct, if ultimately, the road is paved all the way back to the house at the end of the cul-de-sac, excuse me, end of the street, or if that property develops in the future for a neighborhood or more additional development, that would be a time that we'd probably have to revisit the naming of that street.
Mrs. Mauer.
So, if the other surrounding properties developed, and they moved that pavement to the end, would they then be considered on Kelvick Way? And so, it's just to the paved, unpaved portion?
That's staff's recommendation.
Okay.
Because then, you again, have a clear delimeter as to where the Kelvick Way stops and Mineral Spring starts. But under Mr. Snelling's scenario, then we'd probably, may have to revisit that boundary as to where one road starts and stops.
Okay.
Mrs. Shelton.
Mr. Harvey, I understand that the owner of 7K is interested in keeping the name Kelvick Way. Would there be a problem of us going and asking them, so they could have it named now, as opposed to later? Or did you already do that?
Well, Ms. Shelton, they did sign the petition supporting Kelvick Way as one of the street names. It's up to the board, as far as ultimately, how you name streets within the county. So, it could be the board's prerogative. The board can name the whole segment Kelvick Way, it can name the whole segment Mineral Spring Lane, or do something different, if the board so desires.
Okay, so the citizens have signed a petition, is that correct?
I understand there's, yes, yes. The county, my office sent petitions to all the affected owners along the roadway, and asked them to provide names. So, we have, Kelvick Way was one of those that came out of the petitions. There were others that were provided that ultimately ended up becoming Mineral Spring Lane in the discussion.
Okay, and then, I mean, Ms. Hollenberger, do you have a copy of those petitions?
I believe they're in the background report, Madam Chairman.
Okay, so they're back here, too?
Yes, ma'am, and also, a citizen has given me a DVD copy of additional petitions.
So, but on that segment, they indicated they wanted it to be named Big Spring Lane. Is that correct? No.
No, that...
Oh, I got you, never mind. Okay.
I believe, if we go back to the map, do you mind bringing that up, Mr. Harvey? If you go back to the map, then 102C, please correct me if I'm wrong, 102C is owned by Kelvick Way, and so, the proposed from the planning commission is to go to the red line for that to be named Kelvick Way, and the... And the question that I'm asking is about the 7K Investments, what would happen when they develop out M1? And Mr. Harvey is saying that even though they have that, they haven't, and they haven't done any development in that in years.
And Madam Chairman, Ms. Shelton, if the Board wants to establish the end of the road at a property line, certainly you could. If one had stopped the property, the road name here and make the transition at that point, that could be an option.
Any other questions for Mr. Harvey? All right. Thank you, Mr. Harvey. With that, we're going to open the public hearing on item 24, Planning and Zoning. Consider an amendment to the zoning ordinance index of official road names regarding renaming the private segment of Big Spring Lane. Proposed ordinance 018-04. With that, I will open the public hearing.
Thank you. I am Margareta Williamson, and I live at 175 Big Spring Lane. So I'm the only residence on that lane, that portion of Big Spring. I want to tell you a story that was told to me, that fire and rescue demanded a name change as they couldn't find me. This was a falsehood that I lived with. I have lived in this 1814 house for 55 years, and have had to call rescue three times. Each time, they arrived within 15 minutes. They had no problem finding me, and it might be a problem now. If Big Spring Lane North has to be renamed, then its entire one-mile-long wagon road should be known as Mineral Springs, which is a historic name from colonial times. The lane should not be split in half just because part of it is paved. It is still the original wagon lane and contains many springs. It's a shame that the county didn't discuss a name change years ago. It's a shame that a 200-year-old history should be obliterated to satisfy the hunger of a new business. It's a shame that someone can buy 10 acres in the middle of 35, and in just one year, attempt to change a lane's name to his own nonhistoric choice. It's a shame that Kelvick Construction has no sign relaying his house or his residence and changing the name for his advertising. It's a shame that Mr. Zarn will stand here and declare himself to be a good neighbor when, in fact, his responsibility for renaming it is nonhistoric and causing this whole problem. It's a shame that I have to stand before you and defend my 200-year-old lane. Age alone should grandfather its history. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the Board on this item?
Two days, two times in one day. How about that? Could you bring up my V graph?
See, Dan Hicks, 1002 Bailey Court, Rock Hill District. So on the presentation here, I'm going to ask the Board of Supervisors to reject the planning commission's recommended dual-name road option. The subject access lane is to be voted on today and officially recorded as Kelvick Way slash Mineral Springs Lane. I ask the Board to vote, accept the official road name as Mineral Springs Lane. Next. Mineral Springs Lane recognizes historical colonial designation for the area and not an individual name or business. Dual road names are not acceptable format due to potential EMS, law enforcement, and delivery service confusion. Dual road names, and as an attempt to compromise a correct, or to correct Stafford zoning department's admitted initial building permit mistake. Additionally, I ask the Board of Supervisors to consider the petition before you, signed by residents that oppose dual-name roads. I think you have a PDF copy that, or you should have a PDF copy, of 57 citizens that have expressed a concern about this dual-name road option. Next. So, again, what I'm proposing is delete the Kelvick Way designation and make the entire tract Mineral Springs Lane. And again, if that road gets paved later on out to Ms. Williamson's property, we're going to be back here doing this again. Who knows, the next company might want to come in and say, "I want my name on that road." So anyway, you've got a tough decision tonight. I hope you consider the signatures of the residents. And with that, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Ancelita Crawford, and I live in Falkir County. I'm a Virginia resident. I used to work with the Prince William Fire, County and Rescue. Used to volunteer with Catlet Fire and Rescue. I used to volunteer my time with the Virginia Public Safety Foundation, collecting, raising funds for fallen police and fire to get the memorial down in Richmond. When we started this meeting, we were asked to be partial and neutral. And although Ms. Margareta has been in that residence since 1963, and we heard from the historic preservation at the start of this meeting, I believe that it is imperative that we remember the historical and preservation of the history of Virginia. Because so many times now, these days, we're looking at some of these arguments over memorials and everything, and this is just a road name, not over naming it over Ms. Margareta Williamson, and not over a business. And I heard him say, "Oh, this is for Stafford, building a road, you know, having a road there, and he's invested in Stafford." No, he invested in a private road. That is a private tract. And he put his name on a Virginia state road right-of-way, and that's what that is. And he did not follow the proper procedure, and neither did the employees there at the Stafford County Planning Commission in announcing a public hearing and allowing him to put his papers through. So even though he may have started the procedures correctly, and they said he was doing everything right, not everything has been properly done by protocol and through the channels of doing this right, through the right way, for the citizens of Virginia. And that's what I would like to say. And so the entire road should be named, not partial to anybody, and one road. So we're not back here again, and not wasting taxpayer dollars for Virginia. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the Board?
My name is Joe Knight, and I live at 103 Nautical Cove. And I think all of you know that I very much encourage commerce in our county. I like economic development because it supports our tax base. And I'm very happy with what this gentleman's doing with the road, and I want us to work with him in all ways that we can. But I think sometimes there is a need for give and take. And if it's just changing some paperwork and the names on it, and he would consider changing that name to Mineral Springs, I would truly like to see that done. All my life, I've thought of that area having the most powerful springs. At one time, a spring at the bottom of Eskimo Hill supported commerce at the top of the hill. There was a 24-hour truck stop and diner. It supported that and cabins that were around it. And everyone thinks of that area that way, those great mineral springs that are in there. And I think you heard about that recently, when that project was approved there for the other project, the one that is mixed-use development. I'm thinking that I would like to thank this gentleman for coming here to our county and doing this. I do think the whole road should be paved when it is done, and there not be a little strip that isn't. It'll be done sooner or later. But if there was some way that he had considered working with the county and allowing that to be named Mineral Springs, it would be an awfully nice thing to do, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the Board?
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Arlen Crawford. I've managed businesses here in Stafford County for over 12 years.
Mr. Crawford, could you please state your address?
Yes, I live in Spotsylvania, Virginia.
Okay.
I've managed businesses for over 12 years here in the county. In those years, I have made many business friendships. In going out and trying to get these signatures, I've encountered several businesses up and down Route 1 that said it was a great thing, they were definitely interested, but they did not want to sign because they were afraid of you all. It's a shame that businesses here in the county, and I can name several businesses. I see you shaking your head, and that's fine. But it's a shame when, I'm a Christian, and I would not lie about something that's so I'm so passionate about. And I can name several businesses right here, but they didn't want to be involved, they didn't want to have their names down because they were afraid. And it shouldn't be that way. In the beginning of this meeting, you had a historical board up here, lady getting out great awards. And Ms. Williamson lives in a historical home that's a log cabin home, and dates back and has history from the Civil War. And if you do your research and your homework on it, why would you allow an existing property, the 102C, if you look back, already had an existing resident there? It had a name of Big Spring Lane. So when he came in board, the home is still sitting there. He's built, his building's next to it, has not torn it down, so it already had an address. Why did the county, when they admitted, they made a mistake and allowed him to change the name, it's an admitted mistake, the zoning commission, there again, should not have allowed it, it was already an existing address there? I believe that in the right for the county and for residents and future businesses, and any other business that may open up on those other commercial properties, should not have to live with the fact that the person right next door has his name on the road. It's kind of an unfair advantage. Does he have a business name outside on the main part of the road? He does not. He's living off Kelvick Way that he's named his own road. So I believe it should be Mineral Springs Lane. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the Board?
Paul D., 1814, that means 150 years after this county was formed, this house was here. Public servants make mistakes. They made a mistake. They've made mistakes with my property and other people's properties in this county. It's been recorded. You need to read it and go. You want to make it a name, do like I said at the planning commission. Name it Shady Kelvick Lane. And it will, there's another way for you. But you've heard all the history. It's a wagon lane with many springs. It's historical. And you're going to let someone come from Orange County, put his name on a couple parcels, put down some pavement. Remember, pavement doesn't release any oxygen. You know, maybe if he would have used the grass courts like at Whibleton, then maybe we'd get some oxygen out of it. And put it back into its historical context so we can all see the wagon lanes and how some of the roads in Virginia were made because of wagon trains. Many of you forget, this is one of the 13 colonies. I know I bashed the Commonwealth, I'm sorry. But this is one of those historical aspects that, this is not the American Legion, folks. This is a construction company. And I'm a member of the American Legion, and I take heart that you named the American Legion Road because that's what it stands for, for those people. And the same way, this property stands for all Virginians. I'm a New Yorker, doesn't include me, but take care of all the other Virginians. Okay? I remember when I came to the planning commission meeting, I really wanted Ms. Williamson, I wanted to be Williamson Lane. But I like that she gave the history of the many springs and the wagon train lane, which I didn't know nothing about. And I know none of you knew about that. And what also came up was Eskimo Hill Lane and Walnut Hill Lane, but then we had all these things. We have walnuts. Well, we should have Waldowski Lane someday. You'll see. You know, maybe you make a Waldowski building here somewhere. Who knows? And as you heard, it only took 15 minutes for the volunteer firemen to get there. I don't believe in paid firefighters, just so you know. Please do the right thing. Come on.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the Board?
Madam Chairman, fellow Board members, my name is Robert Zarn. I am the owner of the subject property. I just wanted to thank you for your time and try to clarify that, yes, the county did make an error in their decision that allowed the Kelvick Way name to be put onto the site plan approved and all of our permits issued in that way. They did recognize that midway through, and they actually did fall back and follow all of the renaming procedures, and they mailed out all of the information to the affected landowners. And that information came back, and the number of parcels affected, the majority of those parcels supported the Kelvick Way naming. So the procedure was ultimately followed. It was a little bit behind the time, and they got behind eight ball a little bit, but they did rectify that situation. And we did have the public hearing, and we did have all of the history exposed. But, you know, when you think about the, if this is such a historical precious district, why was it converted to M1-zoned industrial property to be developed for commercial business? You know, I can't answer that question, I wasn't here when that was done. But it seems at that time would have been an appropriate time to discuss this naming. And, you know, I didn't come to the county and say, "I'll come only if I can have this name." That this was presented to me as I needed to provide a name. We did so. It was approved. It's not my place to police how the county conducts its business. I had the approval, which, incidentally, was the sole reason why we decided to continue with the project. The cost overruns during our engineering phase leading up to the TRC meeting, we're getting a lot of requirements that hadn't been discovered during our feasibility period. And they were mounting over a couple of hundred thousand dollars. And at the TRC meeting, it was further decided that we needed to upgrade the private lift station that Tridex built to the county standards and turn that over to the county so that we could tie our sewer into. That was another $80,000. We decided at that point to abandon the project and purchase the property in Spotsylvania County had built. It was just a few days after that that we got notified that the Kelvick Way name was approved. And that was the reason that we decided to spend the extra $300,000 and continue pressing on and building here in Stafford County. So we are happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else... Ms. Shelton, this is in your district.
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to make a motion to approve R. 17-320.
Wait, wait, wait.
That is the ordinance.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, R. 17-320.
No, that's not.
No, no.
No, it's, it's proposed ordinance.
018-04.
Okay, no, I have it in front of me. So I'm reading Resolution 17-320. My apologies. I'd like to make, uh, take that back, and I'd like to make a motion to approve proposed ordinance 018-04.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, any discussion by the board?
Yeah, I just want to make a statement that I know the Planning Commission, um, did an immense amount of work in trying to come to some kind of resolution. This, this was deferred several different times, and although I can really see the challenge of having that split road, I, uh, discussed this with Mr. Harvey before, um, what those options are going to be for the county, and I think it's a good compromise between the parties. And, um, I want to thank you for, number one, Mr. Zarn, for all the investment that you're doing. You have 45 employees in Stafford County. I think that's really good for our economy. And then, uh, but the second thing, I want to apologize to you all, both parties, for taking you through this struggle. And so I know, Mr. Zarn, that we directed you to name an unnamed road. The road wasn't named, and you followed that procedure, and that caused this challenge. And so I, I do want to thank the Planning Commission for all the work to get to this compromise.
Mrs. Maurer.
So just for purpose of clarification, the Planning Commission recommend, recommendation was to take it to the, to the pavement, and then the rest would be, the unpaved portion would be, um, the different name. Is that what you're recommending?
That is correct.
Okay, so that would be an amendment to actually what's in the ordinance. So...
How's that amended? I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I apologize, nope. Well?
Madam Chairman.
Yeah, I think we need to amend the ordinance.
Ms. Maurer is correct. The ordinance, uh, is as first referred by the board, which just designates the road as Kelvick Way.
Okay.
If there have dual street names, that would have to be modified to reflect Mineral Spring Lane from whatever start point the board wants to designate.
Right. And so we're just taking, according to this, we're taking Kelvick Way to the end of the pavement.
No. No, this ordinance says that the entire road is going to be named Kelvick Way. So if it's your, if, if you want to amend your motion to go with the Planning Commission recommendation, you need to amend your motion to, to go with the Planning Commission recommendation.
I'm sorry, I thought, I'm really screwing this up, so. My apologies. And so, no, I, actually, I don't think it needs to be deferred because I really believe that, uh, the Planning Commission had made the, the recommendation on that compromise, that it would stop at, in, that it would stop at the end of the pavement. And so not that it would name it, it would allow, uh, the parties to be able to name it any way that they wish to name it, and that it would leave it just as Kelvick Way. And so the development...
We did that.
I'm looking, I'm looking at it.
Mrs. McLendon.
Mr. Harvey, please correct me if I'm wrong, that would leave a road portion without a name. Is that allowable?
You said it didn't have a name, and it did. Ms., Ms. McLendon and, um, Madam Chairman, uh, if the one part of the, of Big Springs Lane is renamed to Kelvick Way, that means the full length of the road would be Kelvick Way unless the board established a separate road name for that, um, gravel portion of the road.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
So in other words, all the, all the structures along that segment would be under-named Kelvick Way unless the board modified the ordinance to reflect a different name on a different segment?
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Cavalier, did you have a comment?
Well, I, I'm going to go ahead and make a substitute motion because it's just way too confusing the way you're doing it here. Um, I, I like Ms. Williamson's idea that we name it Mineral Springs Way, um, and the whole road Mineral Springs Way. I, I don't believe that just bringing a business to the county, and we do appreciate your bringing a business here, but I don't know how you do business in Orange County, but we don't do that business like that in Stafford County. We don't name roads after companies, the last time I checked. And naming anything after anybody seems to be problematic with this board. So I like the Mineral Springs name, and so I'll make a substitute motion to do that right now.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion on the substitute motion to rename the entire road Mineral Spring. Oh, Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, very quick, um, yeah, I mean, I, I'm leery of us being back here again, um, should it get paved. Uh, it just seems as though we're kicking the can down the road or the gravel road. Um, and I, and I'm really, and I talked to my planning commissioner, and I watched the meeting that night, but I didn't really understand the rationale of why changing the name kept them in Stafford versus going to Spotsy. So, um, I, I will support the substitute motion because I just don't see a compelling argument for, for this to be two different names on a road.
Mrs. Shelton.
Um, Chairman, I believe that the compelling argument is that we, Stafford County, directed the company to name the name, and that because we directed them to do that, to go and change their plans and name that portion of the road Kelvick Way, or they could name anything they wanted, they chose, but because we directed that to them, I believe that's the compelling reason why they have some standing to have this discussion with us.
Uh, Mr. Snellings.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman. I do remember the springs, and I remember Eskimo Hill, and I remember Eskimo Diner. Uh, I remember a lot of the history of the county because I'm from here, but that's not my main motivation here. I see this as a safety issue. If you've got a road, a single road with nothing dividing, um, that's a safety issue. I mean, if I call an ambulance to Enon Road where I live, but Enon Road stops 100 yards below my house and turns into something else, I mean, that's very confusing for fire and rescue and for the Sheriff's Department. The other thing is, and I appreciate the business being here, we all do, Kelvick, I appreciate you locating the Stafford. Somebody said, "Where are you going to be 10 years from now?" Well, where's Kelvick going to be? I mean, are they going to still be in the county, or are they still going to be a viable business? Will, will they sell out to someone else with a different name? And then the last thing, um, as a native of the county, I think we do need to preserve as much history as we can. 50 years from now, people are not going to know, they're going to look at Kelvick and say, "What does that stand for?" Um, but they're not going to know anything about those springs. So I'm going to support the substitute motion.
Okay, anyone else? I would just like to say that, um, I guess I, I'm a historical person, so, um, in light of the history awards that were given tonight, um, you know, I guess I think of Leland Station, and there, the main road going into Leland Station is called Walnut Farms. And I didn't realize there were wal, it was a huge walnut grove when they built that. I've talked to people who used to go back there hunting and playing when they were young kids, so, um, I don't like, we have a separation of, we have two roads as you turn by Valero, down by the Chishester's property, you turn off of there, it's one street, and you go about a half of a football field, and then it becomes Forbes Street. It's very confusing. And I guess, since I've been on the Public Safety Committee for three years, public safety is paramount. That's our, one of our number-one priorities. So I'm going to subs, I'm going to, um, support the substitute motion. Would anyone else like to make any comments? Okay, with that, please cast your vote. The motion passes four to three. With that, we are going to go into closed session.
No, that one, that was on the side.
Yeah, that was on. We're going to, uh, Mr. Snellings is going to read us into closed session to finish up business that we did not conduct earlier today.
A resolution to authorize closed meeting, whereas the board desires to hold a closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members pertaining to a probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing is open meeting, and open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the board. Whereas pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A3, comma, A8, such discussions may occur in closed meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passed unanimously. The board is now in closed session. All right, have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.